Mr. Chambers?
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Dear Mayor, President, and Long term Councilor, this is to inform you that I am currently addressing personal medical issues that will prevent me from temporarily performing my duties as Mayor of the City of Millersville. I regret that I will be unable to attend the meeting and personally in accordance with Section 21.4 of the City Charter. In my absence, Ms. Walden, as the duly appointed Mayor Pro Tem, will assume the responsibilities of the Mayor until I am able to return to this position. As always, I would ask for your prayers for me and for my family as we are dealing with such personal matters. Thank you for your consideration and may God bless our great city. So submitted this the 27th day of October 2014. Richard Bentley, Mayor, City of Millersville. A copy was sent to Mr. Barry Jarrett, who is our City Manager, and also a copy was sent to Jimmy Jordan, who is our City Attorney. Please, I would ask for all of us to pray for Mayor Bentley and his family, because he is far more important than him being here this evening. I would ask you take a moment in silence and honor and honor of the Mayor. I would also ask that at this time, we all come together and conduct this vision of our great city. We are all very ahead with our regular agenda this evening with our press and our respect for each other and most of all, do what is in the best interest of our communities' will. May God bless the Bentley family and bless Millersville. If everyone would now please stand as we have a prayer. I would ask that you take a moment of special prayer for Mayor Bentley while we are standing for the prayer and then I will finish it out at that time when we have the grandchildren. We thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for your patience with us, Lord, as we fall short and don't always take the time to say thank you. Lord, we ask tonight that you put your arms around the Bentley family and bring them healing, comfort, and peace as only you can do. God bless this council and God bless Millersville. Be with us tonight as we take on the business of this city. Guide us and direct us in all that we say and do. Help us in a way that is pleasing unto you. Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have all received the copy of the minutes for the October 15, 2013 Council meetings and also for October 16 and also for October 21, 2014, called Council Meetings. Are there any changes or corrections that are needed to be made? If not, then I will entertain a motion that we adopt these minutes as read.
So move.
I'll ask the clerk.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
We have two public hearings tonight to consider the process for future hearings to be discussed. The decision has been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised and the clerk will read these codes in. We were then here to advise the decision of planning and zoning. The chair will recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of these minutes. The chair will then hear from the person who would like to speak in opposition of the hearing. We will then give an opportunity for rebuttal. When the chair recognizes any person or persons who would like to testify, I would ask that you first give your name and addresses for the letter. Anyone who would like to speak is encouraged to do so. However, in an essence of time, I am requesting that you keep your comments as brief as possible. The first hearing is to consider ordinance 01409-015 to amend the Land Development Code to allow special use of 1241 West Montgomery Street. Has the public hearing, as it is closely posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, has been.
I will ask the clerk to read the statement in caption.
This is ordinance amending the Land Development and amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the 10th of December 2002 known as the Land Development Code of the City of Millersville, Georgia. Ordinance granting a special use for sorority with eight residents with a property located at 1241 West Montgomery Street.
What is the advisory decision of the planning and zoning?
Unanimous in favor of approval.
Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? Please state your name.
Marvin Gray, I'm planning and zoning. I was just going to give a little brief history of this. This house currently already has a special use for seven residents. It is within the Ovalite District, which everybody approved for the sororities and group residence. And now, the special use is for sorority and they're in addition, they have eight residents. It has been inspected, they have the proper parking, and it's now. Any questions? I guess I'll turn it over to them.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? You fight first, is there anyone?
Oh, it's Mary. I just wanted to take time, thank you for coming out tonight and helping us with this. We have been working on this for a while. My name is Libby Lindahl.
Would you please give your name and address?
Yeah, Libby Lindahl, L-I-N-D-A-H-L. President of Ada Mune House Corporation, the Capa Delta Sorority. I'm not going to take much time, but I did want you to know that we purchased this house in January to give you a little history. The special use for seven was granted in '09. I know that new district overlay that you have just in '13. We did a summer remodel to increase the load capacity to make it safer, to make it a sorority house. And we have been approved by planning and zoning. So I just wanted to kind of let you know that little history. Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like here tonight that wants to speak in opposition of this? All right, this concludes our presentation. I would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk, if you will, to call the row.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Dr. Lee?
Okay, the second hearing is to consider ordinance 01409-016 to amend the Land Development Code to reduce the setbacks within the heavy industrial area. Has this public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
Okay, has the advisory decision on the Planning and Board of Commission, what is it?
It was also unanimous in favor of approval.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this amendment? You again, would you state your name?
Marvin Gray, I'm planning and zoning. This was recommended by the Industrial Authority. The setbacks previously were just too large. They were 200 on the front and side, and then there were 100 on the rear. And so this was the recommendation that was made by Mr. Matt Horner of the Industrial Authority to do these setbacks. It was agreed upon, Planning and Zoning unanimous, may approve it. Okay, I'm sorry.
Is there any questions? Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition? Does counsel have any questions about this? This concludes our presentation on this. Could I have a motion?
Make a motion, we accept the findings of the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
The next item on our agenda is to consider ordinance 01410-06 to make amendment to the code of ethics.
It's ordinance 026.
Ask the clerk to read the ordinance in caption, please.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Section 2-222 through 2-231 entitled Code of Ethics of the Code of Ordinances, City of Millersville, Georgia, to provide the method to resolve ethics complaints in the event two or more elected city officials are named in a complaint or complaints arising out of the same alleged circumstance to provide for renumbering of sections to provide an effective date and for other purposes.
You have heard the amendment, I will entertain a motion.
Due to the overwhelming input from the citizens, I would motion that we table this for further discussion.
Do I have a second? Hearing no second. Having no second, that motion will fail.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rule and vote on it tonight.
This is actually the second.
I have a motion, can I have a second on this one?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Motion and I have a second.
Excuse me, Ms. Mullins. Make a motion to pass the ordinance as written.
I need a second on this. Okay, I'll second it. I have a motion and I have a second. I'm going to ask that the clerk call the row.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Point of order.
There is no part of 015. There can't be a lot of. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance 1410-02 back action.
Conduct first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to rezone property located at 631 North Columbus Street. Property is currently owned by Chester Dobbie and Zone CC. Owner desires to rezone property to MR2 in order to combine adjoining properties so it can be developed for three buildings with 21 units for total of approximately 84 bedrooms. Total combined properties will be approximately 1.9 acres.
This is the first reading of this ordinance and it is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Board. I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance 01410-21 back action.
Conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to rezone property located at 625 North Columbus Street. Property is currently owned by Cedric Davis and Zone CC. Owner desires to rezone property MR2 in order to combine it with adjoining properties so it can be developed for three buildings with 21 units for a total of approximately 84 bedrooms. Total combined properties will be approximately 1.9 acres.
This is the first reading of this ordinance and it is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Board. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance. 01410-022 back action.
Conduct first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to rezone property located at 605 North Columbus Street. Property is currently owned by Cedric Davis and Zone CC. Owner desires to rezone property to MR2 in order to combine it with adjoining properties so it can be developed for three buildings with 21 units for a total of approximately 84 bedrooms. Total combined properties will be approximately 1.9 acres.
This is the first reading of this ordinance and it is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Board. I'll ask the clerk to read 01410-023 back action.
Conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to rezone property located at 431 West Charlton Street. Property is currently owned by Cedric Davis and Zone CC. Owner desires to rezone property to MR2 in order to combine it with adjoining properties so it can be developed for three buildings with 21 units for a total of approximately 84 bedrooms. Total combined properties will be approximately 1.9 acres.
This is the first read of this ordinance and it is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Board. I'll ask the clerk to read ordinance 01410-024 back action.
This is to conduct the first reading of an ordinance amending the Land Development Code to rezone property located at 419 West Charlton Street. Property is currently owned by Kimberly Thomas and Zone CC. Owner desires to rezone property to MR2 in order to combine it with adjoining properties so it can be developed for three buildings with 21 units for a total of approximately 84 bedrooms. Total combined properties will be approximately 1.9 acres.
This is the first reading of this ordinance and it is assigned to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is the first reading of the ordinance that is assigned to the Planning and Zone Board. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances to add a section establishing an alcohol beverage catering catering license. Marvin, if you would, I'll ask you to come up and speak on that.
Okay, this ordinance establishes the it's an off-premises alcoholic beverage catering license which will allow a business or individual that currently holds a liquor license or a beer/wine license to do a one-day or an event to where they can carry their stock from their store to the event, recap it, and bring it back if there's anything left over. The cost for that would be 100. And then what they would do would get an off-premises alcoholic beverage catering event permit, which would be $25 an event. But this would allow the caterer to move through quicker on it because they would not have to come before council every time there was an event because the fingerprint and the background check and all that would have previously done when they obtained the license. And I do believe they were asking to suspend the rules tonight.
I'm going to.
Okay, and then there's a resolution that will set the fees.
Okay. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance.
An ordinance amending the City of Millersville Code ordinances by amending Article 4, Section 6-1 definitions and by adding Section 6-235 alcoholic beverage catering.
Motion to suspend the rules and approve on the first read.
Okay, I would like to remind the council that our next council meeting has been canceled in order to get the ordinance in place for catering during the holiday season. We do need to go ahead and adopt this ordinance. So.
We have a motion to.
We have a motion to suspend the rules. We need a second in order to do that. Did you second that, Mr. Mullins? Second. Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
The final item on our agenda.
We need to, yeah. Motion to approve the amendment.
Make a motion to amend the agenda to add this resolution.
Okay, we need the motion first to.
No, actually, we are right now voting on the ordinance and we have already voted to suspend the rules. So now we're voting actually on the ordinance.
Now we are voting on the ordinance.
We have to suspend the rules and then vote on the ordinance. We have suspended the rules and passed that now.
Now we're voting on the ordinance.
Correct.
Uh-huh, on the ordinance, okay. And do we have a second? Who's second? Who's second motion? Who's second motion?
Second.
Okay.
I did not. I was the second.
I seconded.
Okay. Then I'll ask the clerk to file the row.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
The final item on the agenda is to consider the resolution R1410-040 to authorize copier lease agreement in the office of the City of Millersville.
To authorize Mayor Richard Bentley to enter into a lease agreement with Georgia Duplicating Properties Incorporated for the lease of copiers in the City Manager's Office, the Accounting Office, and the Water and Sewer Office.
So move.
I have a motion and a second. I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
We have a resolution which is R1410-041. It is setting the fees for the alcohol beverage catering ordinance. I would ask that the clerk read that in caption, please.
Motion to amend the agenda to include resolution R-1410-041.
Would you read it in caption, please?
Need a second on that motion to amend the agenda.
Second.
We're voting on the making of the agenda.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Now.
Motion to approve resolution R-1410-041.
I'll ask the clerk to call the row.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
I'm going to address Mr. Richardson and ask him whether he will be prepared to make his recommendations of special master.
I'm going to ask Mr. Richardson, if you will, to come out and let us know if you do have a.
Mayor Pro Tem, I believe we would need to amend the agenda to include this item.
This is not a voting item. He's just going to address counsel as legal counsel.
Tell me what I'm being asked to do.
To advise counsel as to when you're prepared to make your recommendations.
When is the special master? Okay, when is the next meeting?
The next meeting will be November, what's the date? It wouldn't be the next, we're not having one. He's going to look and see. It wouldn't be the next two weeks, but it would be.
The 25th of November.
The what? 25th of November.
Okay. Then I would make the recommendation then.
You will make the recommendation on the 25th of November.
Yes. Hey, can, would y'all be able to vote on it at that meeting?
They could. What I was hoping is that you could. What I was hoping was that you would be able to make the recommendation in advance of that meeting and whoever you are recommending that you would provide some type of resume or information.
Well, that's what I want to, is if it's appropriate. I can make the recommendation tonight, but I don't know whether that's appropriate or not.
If the agenda is amended, you can make the recommendation tonight if you so choose. They probably would not vote on it tonight because they would need to look at it.
Yes, and I've got material that you could review and that sort of thing, if that's all right.
Would it be the desire of the council to amend the agenda so that Mr. Richardson can give us the name?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to allow Mr. Richardson to provide us with the information that he has.
Second.
Motion and a second to amend the agenda so that Mr. Richardson can give us the name.
We need to follow, amend the agenda first.
Let us.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Nay.
Ms. Schenhalster?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
And then you can recognize Mr. Richardson.
Yes, thank you. I've looked into this in some depth and thought about a lot of people outside of Baldwin County that could handle this matter. And the thought occurred to me to, it would be good to kind of run over the list of professors that I know at Mercer Law School. And the person that came to mind for me was a professor named Patrick E. Longan, Pat Longan. And the reason he came to me, came to mind for me is that he's taught there for a number of years at Mercer. He holds the William Augustus Bootle Chair in Ethics and Professionalism in the Practice of Law for the past 14 years, which is a very distinguished position. He is a specialist in the area of ethics. He has written extensively on ethics issues. He has also been retained by the State of Georgia and the Governor on a couple of occasions to handle ethics-related matters. I can't say they're similar. I can't say they're similar to this, but they are ethics issues that he has been appointed basically as a special master to handle. I have not been able to think of anybody that I think would be better equipped to perform the task that we would have for him in accordance with the amended ordinance, and I would strongly recommend him. I've got his resume to give to everybody here. It's quite extensive, because these professors, they write a lot, but I mean, you can look at the subject matter and you'll see consistently that he's dealt with issues of this type. He's taught it. This is what he lives, and I think that he would be an excellent person. So if, if, with your permission, I'd like to hand you all the, the resumes.
With no other business tonight, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.